A meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge Allegions.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufal, here. Krista Regan?
Absent excuse, I'm sorry.
Kristy Hilton, here. Artie Bryson?
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here. Joanne Shirkey?
Here.
Mark Bouchard?
Here.
All right, we're all here for that, except, well, Chris, but we do have a quorum. First thing on agenda, we have a special, or a public hearing on a special assessment for canal cleaning on Bayview, Dyke, Phillips Drive. I'll entertain a motion to open that.
I'll make a motion to open public hearing regarding special assessment canal cleaning Bayview, Dyke, Phillips Drive at 7:01.
All right. Okay, motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. I'll open up the public hearing. Do we have anyone that wants to speak about the special assessment on canal cleaning on Bayview, Dyke, and Phillips Drives? Anybody? Anybody? Not seeing anybody. I'll entertain a motion to close it.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the special assessment aquatic cleaning for Bayview shores, Dyke, Phillips Drive canals at 7:02.
All right. Okay, motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have bills payable. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pay bills payable in the amount of $112,056.66.
Okay, I have motion?
Support.
And support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Good evening to the board. My name's Estelle Waller-Zack. I live at 10371 St. John Drive. I have a demolition going, again, next door to me on the east side. And it was my impression, through the scope of our local ordinance, zoning ordinance 126, before a building permit or demo is done, before the demo is done, that electrical, gas, water has to be shut off. They're demoing the little cottage next door, and all of a sudden, we have a waterfall of water shooting up in the sky, and they're still demoing the house. I did call the fire department, gave my name, said it was a non-emergency, that somebody had to come down and shut the water off immediately. Luckily, the gas and electric were off. I'm also here about, I represent 50 people on the waterfront side of St. John's Drive. And we know that we presented to the planning commission before their last meeting, two meetings ago, maybe, about the rear waterfront setbacks going into a straight line setback on the waterfront. That meant that all houses would stay within the 330 feet. Nothing could obstruct the views. It wouldn't interfere with any of the ordinances, because all through our ordinances, we have unobstructed views. You cannot block a view. Well, that didn't happen. Why it happened was because of a new build through an 80-foot foreclosure. The new residents got their home occupancy on November of 2016, two months after their home occupancy. It was the building department that sent a letter to the ZBA on January 18, 2017, two months after the home occupancy. They wanted a clarification of the Section 311-1 that had to do with three things, that shrubs would stay at three feet, trees pruned to eight feet, that nothing could be built unless it was in the 330 feet. Well, with the renovation, we went to the office. We obtained a picture of what was submitted to grant them a building permit, 13 feet, 4 inches added on to the previous, existing house. However, even though it says 330 feet, they allowed them to go out two feet further and pulled this picture out of the file and substituted it with the finished product where a cantilever's out two feet further than the 330 feet. And that was approved by the building department. The building department is also responsible for the interpretation, and I'll read the words. The zoning board of appeals ruled a few years ago that on the roadside fences should be put in on the roadside up to the front yard setback, which we know is 20 feet. The building department requested determined that we can do the same with trees and shrubs in the required rear setback. Under Section 311-1, we had it at three feet, so as not to obstruct a view. Trees could grow to be pruned up to eight feet, not a five-foot dwarf tree, not six-foot arborvitae that completely block view beyond the house up to the edge of a neighbor's patio. I've lived on one side 21 years, the other one's been there 10 years, and we've always had the open view until this interpretation by the building department. How I know it was an illegal interpretation, because their final words, "approved, set." Motion by McNearing Slater, supported by Shemansky, that is, in our interpretation that from the rear of the house to the rear setback on waterfront property, as defined in Section 311-1, it is our interpretation that it does not regulate the trees, the shrubs, or the greenery. It does, at three feet and eight feet. Therefore, they can put any tree, shrubbery, and they threw a word, "arborvitae," in there, which we never had in the ordinances before that date. This was planted four months later, on May 19, 2017. My cell phone has all the pictures.
Excuse me, Estelle. When was the date of that meeting at ZBA?
That was January 18. There was nobody present there. There was one couple for a appeal. They left after the meeting. Then they read that this letter was submitted by the building department in your ordinances for interpretation. It says the jurisdiction of the zoning board of appeals has the right to make an interpretation, but they do not have the right to change an ordinance or change its meaning. And so, for the neighbors to plant six-foot arborvitae beyond the house and block the views that we've had for 80 years is a violation of our ordinance. Thank you very much. There's a lot of violations of ordinances, and if you research them, they all go back to the building department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Estelle. Okay, any other public comments? Seeing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of October 15, 2018, and synopsis, check reports, the September police and water report, November parks and rec updates, communication from Senator Gary Peters, request from Cindy Babish for M-Parks Conference, January 29 through February 1, $400 plus lodging in Kalamazoo, and request Excel training for Diane and Janet, $79, one day of training, and Chief Rose and myself, $128 for two days each of us.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion or anything? I want a quick mention that we did, the meeting before, we passed a resolution in support of, or against the Senate bill requesting pilots, you know, the change in law requiring pilots on the Great Lakes for foreign boats, and we did, I thought we did get a nice response from Senator Gary Peters, so our voice did not go unheard, so I thought that was good. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next is the supervisor's report. If you recall, our last meeting, we had, we're rebuilding the bridge on Anchor Bay Drive, the first bridge, and they got into it and saw it was worse than it was, and we had to put weight restrictions on. Basically, you couldn't even get a school bus or a gas truck or anything across it. Well, pleased to say that they did, actually, very quickly, within a week, they finished the one side of the new span, so that weight restriction has gone off. The county did a good job of expediting that half. Still building the other half, and it's still one-way. I was trying to get an ETA, and when they think it would be done today, but I failed to do that. Couldn't, couldn't get any, a hold of anybody on that issue. But, you know, I'm guessing in probably a week and a half, that project will be done, and it will be back to a two-lane road again. I just wanted to mention to the board, we do have two arbitration hearings coming up with terminations of employees with MAFF coming up in the next couple of months. I don't know if you noticed, but the DDA, they paid for a new electronic sign. Ours had, out in front, ours had issues. They bought that sign 25 years ago, and that was installed last Friday, and it's color LED, and it looks, it's pretty bright. And we're actually refurbishing our old sign, and it's going to be installed in front of the fire department on Muskrat Run. I, we're going to put it right in the corner of their parking lot, and I haven't, I thought they had been there by now to cut the cement and stuff, but they haven't shown up. I'll, I'll find out when their ETA is on that. Also, the DDA seal-coated the walking path in the parking lot over in the park, turned out pretty nice. I mentioned to the board that we have concerns with our sewer interceptor line, who's responsible for the maintain, maintenance of it. And I do have a meeting set up in a couple of weeks, about two and a half weeks, actually, with deer hunting season, and you can't do a meeting around here during deer hunting season. But after Thanksgiving, we have, we have a meeting and to discuss who's really in charge of maintaining the sewer interceptor lines. We've been shopping for health insurance renewals, and I just want to mention to the board, we're shopping hard, because to keep the same insurance that we have with HAP, it would be a 35% increase, and that's not an option. So we are busy looking for, hard for alternatives. And we do have some options for meeting with Burnham and Flowers this coming, or yeah, this coming week, to see what, you know, what our budgets can handle, and, you know, we might even be switching to a different company, but, you know, our, what we want to do is get something that our budget can handle and hopefully, you know, and give, provide real good coverage for our employees. So we're, we got to think out, out of the box again on health insurance. It seems like we have to do that every couple, three years, but, so we're going to be busy with that going forward. Did talk to the auditors. They are finishing our 1718 audit, and they'll be presenting to us soon. I'm not sure exactly what meeting yet. And they also will be starting our water rate study to make sure we're on track, if we can adjust it down, or if we have to adjust it up going forward, or however. I know the last time we did that, we, we do, we, in fact, I think the last time I checked was about a year and a half ago. We got the cheapest water rates in the county, but I want to make sure we're on track and, and get a, make sure we have a good handle on it. We did have a study done five years ago or so from Plant Moran, and that's what we've been using, but that's expired, and, and so, well, we voted on having that done to renew it, so. Let's see. Given the, we had the Scarecrow Festival, it's now, what, two weeks ago, seems like yesterday, and given, and it was one of those rainy Saturdays, yeah, Saturday days, and given the rain and the weather, it was well-attended. We, I bet you we had 250 people there that went through it, and I thought it was a success, and I just want to make, mention that, and it's a good event. And we do have a lot of other rec programs scheduled, and a lot of fun stuff, from arts and craft workshops. We have a window painting class now, exercise, cooking classes are getting kicked off and coming soon. If you're interested in any of those, and you're on Facebook, like, go to Clay Township Parks and Rec and like us, they're all listed there. Also, call, send in the billing department, she can help you out. With all the rain we've been getting the past week and a half, and I think the Corps of Engineers are kind of revising their estimates. I haven't received official word yet, but I wouldn't be surprised if we have higher water next year versus what we had this year and the year before. So that being said, I'm going to start being proactive very soon, see if we can get, we already have free sandbags available, see if we can get some free sand from the Corps of Engineers, so we can fill them for our residents, and see what other kind of, else kind of relief we can get. I know Chief Coach and I were talking this morning about possibly that there's grant money available for the, so we can get more hours of marine patrol out on our waters, especially in the spring. I mean, we got to do something, because every, if it's higher than it was this year, every weekend, we have all those waves and it's tearing up our property, so. We are acutely aware of that, and hopefully, we can have some type of relief going forward. And I just want to mention to the board, I won't be here at our next meeting, I'm going to sneak out of town, so. I think we should have Chris chair, since he's not here.
Yes.
Don't you think that's fair?
Yes.
I believe he agrees.
Should we make that a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that Chris chairs the next meeting, next two weeks from now.
She said four.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Fix him and miss a meeting. I hope, I'm just wondering what you guys will have me do when I'm gone.
Just watch the meeting.
Just watch the meeting.
We'll make a report.
Yeah, well, I'm sure, so. All right, sounds good. Next, we have a fire chief report. Chief Rose?
For the month of October, I attended one meeting, and that was the St. Clair County Chiefs Association, and they discussed the pagers again. They found some of the errors in the programming and in the length of the antennas on our pagers, so they're looking at getting us some antennas, and they will be issuing a patch for us to upgrade our pagers. Fire Department hired, the new hires are working eight-hour shifts now. I have them coming in, working eight hours to get familiar with the equipment in the department, and to familiarize themselves with the township. They also work, come in on every Tuesday, and they are training with the captain. I submitted 2017 grant. We're working with Marine City and Algonak. We submitted for auto extrication equipment and then radios, and then I reissued, or resubmitted the, new fire truck, for a new fire truck. Fire Boat Two was taken out last week. We do have Fire Boat One still in. That will remain in for the month of December, or until the ice starts to form on the canals. So if we need the boat out on any of the outer islands, or if anybody needs rescuing, we still have the boat, plus we have airboat. Pump testing was complete on all the trucks. Everything passed its pump capacity test. It has some open write-ups that they're fixing, so we will get that taken care of. Fire prevention for the month of October, we did, we had Millside Elementary, we did kindergarten class, came in, or we came, went over to the kindergarten class, first grade and second grade. We taught fire safety, and we also put them to the smokehouse. We also had the preschoolers come over and do a visit to the fire station from Point Trumal Elementary. Fire Department did quite a few standbys in the month of October. We had tackle football. We had the Halloween party over on Stewart Farms on the island. We had the regional cross-country meet at Algonak High School, and we also had the bonfire at Pearl Beach Lions Club. And that's it. Very good.
Thank you. How many, I call them jaws of life. How many units are you writing a grant for?
We wrote a grant for six. That's two for each department, and they'll be what they call e-hydraulics, so it'll be running off a battery instead of an external hydraulic line, so if we have to go out into a field, or if we have to be mobile with them, that'll allow us to do that.
So we'll be getting two?
We'll be getting two sets, one for the mainland, and then also one for the island.
Okay.
I have a question. When you submitted the grant for a new fire truck, did you furnish specifications?
No. I just got a basic quote. I think it was like $565,000.
And we did polish it up a little bit from last year's application.
Yes.
So. Any questions for the chief? Thanks. Good job.
Sounds like you were busy.
October is a bit, no new events in October, please. It's crazy. Unfinished business, we have the Fire Department Association update. Actually, right now, there's really not much more to update. I've been trying to get some more information from attorneys and the status. I know they're working on getting their 501(c)(3) status for the new association, so we'll be legit going forward. New business, Bayview Engineering. This is a bill, again, we've had to do this last couple of meetings, that our normal engineering company is project control engineering, but they did the engineering on this particular job, and you can't inspect your own work, so we hired Bayview Engineering to give us an opinion and inspect the plans to see if they meet the township specs. So entertain a motion to pay Bayview Engineering for $3,106.78, and this money does come back to us through the permit process.
Make a motion to pay Bayview Engineering in the amount of $3,106.78.
Support. Okay, motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, I have on here, I'm requesting the board to reappoint Tom Cozel to the planning commission. I did receive, I put it on your desk that he, you know, he wants to be involved with the planning commission and, and willing to go for another term, and...
Would that be a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Tom Cozel to the planning commission, effective 11/15/2018 until 11/15/2021.
Support.
For your term. Okay, motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have local fund, local road funding assistance, and this is to pave Starville Road next year. And as I mentioned to the board before, usually, you get, township will get these awarded every other year, but we've been lucky, I think this is our sixth one in a row, and they will pay up to $50,000 in matching. I remember about four years ago, we do a road like Starville for about 100 grand, so it would be 50 on us and 50 grand from the county, but the costs have gone up quite a bit the past three or four years with asphalt and labor. We're estimating this, and hopefully, it'll be under it, but the project cost will be $140,000 next year. So the, basically, this grant will cover 50 grand, it'll be $90,000 out of our, our budget for next year.
This is, and this, this is from Holland all the way to?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes. And in there, well, when they did swart out, they left about 100 feet, or 50 feet of the turn, and told them to throw that in there, too. And this will go up for bids, we'll probably bid it January, February for next year.
I'll make a motion to approve the supervisor to submit for local road funding assistance from the St. Clair County Road Commission.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. I would like to mention, too, what the county does. They'll wrap, they'll put this out for bid with probably about five or six other jobs. They'll wrap it in a bundle. That usually gets, is more competitive bidding for us, you know, instead of just doing this road solo. So it usually helps out with the bids, too. So. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have the Pearl Beach Lions, it's requesting permission to use the park December 1st for their Christmas, their Christmas program. They light the Christmas tree, they decorate the park, and have rise with Santa and all kinds of stuff. It'll be starting at 4 o'clock, and they usually wrap it up by 8 o'clock, so. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Pearl Beach Lions to use the park on December 1st, 2018, beginning at 4:00 PM.
Support. Okay, motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
When do they do their winter?
That's in February. Yeah, that's usually the second week of February, I believe, the winter fest. Okay, next, we have Resolution 201848 to amend the fire budget. We received a couple of grants this past year, and we have to reflect that in the revenue and expense side. We received one grant for $104,000 and change to put new ventilation systems in both fire stations, and we received a grant for $484,101 for Scott packs, air packs, that we, we received for our department. And then we also have received contributions for Algonak's share of that bid and Marine City's share of that, of that grant. So that would be, their shares would be revenue coming in, and we also do, we do have a balance of monies that we can spend on that type of a thing, on $5,899. So basically, the, the current bottom line of the fire budget was $999,490, and the new bottom line with these grants that we did receive is $1,624,509.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 201848 to amend the fire department budget to $1,624,509.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
Yes. It says amendment to the lease budget.
Yeah, wrong budget.
It says fire department further down, but...
On the regular resolution, it's headed.
That was the last one we amended.
Just bring that to your attention to correct.
Yeah, guy's sneaking in on you, just because you win the Scarecrow. Is it the Scare? Not yet. Just because you win the Scarecrow competition, you think you can scam on his grant money?
There's your mention. That's all you get.
Yeah. Okay, we have, we have support also?
Yes.
Any more discussion? Hearing other than Joanne's correcting, please, from fire. Thank you, Joanne. Roll call vote, please.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have to, this is, we have to pay this, right?
Yeah, that's the, now that we got the grant money.
Right, now we got the grant money, we got it in the budget, we can, we have to spend it. We need the board's approval to, for Westshore Fire, for the 537,890, for the Scott packs that we got.
I'll make a motion to approve the payment to Westshore Fire for 537,890 for the SCVAs.
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
All right, next, we have approve the nationwide investment option, employee voluntary contributions. You want to talk about this, Cindy? You know more about it?
No, Christie didn't know.
Or Chrissy?
I'll just read what I have here. I spoke with the township nationwide plan rep, Candace Cataldi, on October 25th, and she explained the 457(b) plan that the township currently offers for supplemental retirement investment. Any full-time or regular part-time employee can initiate a pre-tax deduction towards this 457 plan. The current plan is mainly made up of mutual funds, but also includes the nationwide fixed annuity. The guaranteed minimum interest rate for this fixed annuity has a current floor rate of 3.5%, which, due to the interest rate trends, they will no longer offer. So we have three options, which are in the documents following this page, but her recommendation is option three, which is what they're calling the default option. It would keep existing balances in the current fixed contract with, they would maintain their current GMIR of 3.5%, and new contributions will no longer be accepted to the fixed contract. And then, sub option B would be utilizing the plan's existing default investment alternative for future allocations.
How many people do we have in this? Do we know?
I think there are 19, and I think she said four or five are inactive right now, so.
Okay.
That's about right.
All right.
These are, just so everyone understands on the board, these are just 100% employee contribution. We don't contribute anything to this 457. This is totally up to them as an additional investment, so. But Christie does get charged with worrying about the investment for it, so.
So the new investments going forward, it'll be under current market rate and without a guarantee? Is that how it works?
Well, they have an existing default investment alternative, so everyone will be notified of that, and they get to choose.
Oh, they choose themselves.
What they're investing in, yeah.
Okay.
But they're no longer offering this annuity for new, for new funds.
So we need a motion to accept the new nationwide investment options, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll support.
Okay, motion to support. Any discussion? I should go roll call on this, huh? Roll call.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next, we have Resolution 201849 to approve the special assessment on Aqua, aquatic cleaning canals of Bayview Dyke Phillips Drive.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-49 for aquatic cleaning canals, Bayview Shores, Dyke Phillips Drive, for confirming the rule.
Support.
Yeah, motion to support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have board member comments. Cindy, you have anything?
I do.
I bet.
Just wanted to tell everybody to get out to vote. Everybody at the township is working very busily today to make sure the voting was set up. Everything is ready to go, so we'll see everybody at the polls.
Open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Okay, great. Mark, you have?
Just the planning commission, the Harsons Island Museum, I guess for lack of a better word, that expansion has been approved, as far as the site plan is concerned, for the expansion. And a good job to the Fire Department in October. You guys were busy. Thank you.
Okay, Joanne?
ZBA, there is no meeting this month, nothing scheduled, and I want to say kudos to Fire Department, they just keep moving forward and accomplishing lots of good things. And I do believe that the association is meeting this Saturday, and perhaps they'll have something from their committee regarding the Fire Department. But I will plan to attend, so I can hear, hear anything and bring it back.
Okay. Sandy?
I just want to let everyone know that I will be working elections tomorrow in Precinct Five, so I look forward to seeing everyone's smiling face bright and early. Don't forget to go out and vote. And Chief Coach, congratulations, you and your team brought home your trophy for Scarecrow Fest. Oh, yeah, that's right. Look forward to next year's competition.
Where's that trophy at, by the way?
I believe it's in the foyer of the Fire Department, the Police Department?
What's that?
Is it over in your foyer?
Yeah. It's sitting right there, displayed right further, patch on the wall.
In case you want to go view it.
We'll take a picture.
Usually, we bring it in here and present it, so. We could have made a bigger deal about it, but you ran off with it right away.
I wasn't letting him get his hands back.
Chrissy?
Just wanted to give an update on invoice cloud.
Oh, thank you.
I worked on about three pages of questions for implementation, so that's moving along, and we have an anticipated kickoff of mid-May.
Okay, awesome.
I have one other thing to direct to you. I still haven't received my, or had a picture taken for my township ID card. Every time I go over there, Kevin kicks me out. I don't know if it's the camera.
All right. Yeah, congrats to the Police Department on their trophy, but I have to say that they were going around and telling people, "How you driving home?" We have a lot of patrols out writing tickets.
I did hear that.
There is a little threatening, I perceived, and for the vote, but it was a fun day.
It was.
I must say, I was a little worried at first, because it wasn't really a skeleton festival, it was a scarecrow festival, and you guys had a lot of skeletons.
We had scarecrows.
Eventually, yes. You guys pulled it off at the last hour.
So I want to remind everyone to watch out for buses driving, you know, the kids home to school and back from school, and also deer, there are lots of deers moving this time of year with all our hunters out in the woods and everything else, and they're, and this is our time of year where they move a lot, so. Watch out for the deer, and everyone get out to vote. I put it on Facebook, if anyone needs a ride to the polls, they have problems getting there, message me on Facebook, and we'll do our best to get them there to vote, so.
To be careful, because, because the, with the rain and the cloudy skies.
Is it supposed to rain tomorrow?
Yes. Very difficult to see.
Selection day, of course, it's going to rain.
Huh?
But isn't that supposed to rain?
Yeah, it's true lately.
Small construction.
It's been raining for like six days.
November, it's time for the November rain.
That's right. All right, I'll entertain one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a good Thanksgiving, and safe few weeks.
Oh, you won't be here.